City Council will come to order.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, April 6, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keez, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.
We will have a moment of silence for everyone who was traumatized by yesterday's shooting at Erie High, the victim, the teachers, the staff, the students, the community, the police officers who responded. Now we will stand for...
Moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today, first of all grateful that you have allowed us to assemble in these chambers today, oh Lord. We just ask that you, with your Spirit, lean upon us that we might make prudent, good decisions on behalf of the city and the residents of Erie, PA. Lord, we just ask that you look at the violence in the city, in our country, oh Lord, and just, in your providence, help us solve the problems, help us ease the frustration, help us find better solutions than violence all across the boards. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the City Council meeting of Wednesday, March 16, 2022, and bills for payment on the 8th and the 15th. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keez, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
Just for an explanation to members of the public and also to council, I think I helped to explain this before we came out here, but we are going to be taking, we've always had an item on our agenda which says "presentation," but at some point, sometimes we're going to use this for council people to present new ideas so that we aren't just shuffling those off till the end of the meeting when we have committee reports and sometimes people will have left or people will have tuned out. So today, Councilman Michael Keez is going to talk about what he sees as the need to revise the parking fines and the schedule that we settled on a number of years ago. So, Michael?
Yeah, so, in a nutshell, at the 90-day progression, Erie has the highest ticket, parking ticket, in the state, and we're also the poorest city in this state, which is a big contrast. And so, I've been part of the toll and review board and the ticket review board for the past two years, and one of the things that keeps coming up is how fast the ticket goes up, where the ticket goes up in 10 days, and a lot of us haven't even received a paycheck within that period. We get paid bi-weekly, and so, one of the ideas is to slow that progression and to start it where it doesn't start going up until after 30 days, and then we will cap it at $100 as opposed to $135. It's not a lot of relief, but it gives people more time and it does save money on the back end. I hope with the 30 days that more people will get in there and pay during the 30 days if you have opportunity to receive income during that time and you can, you can pay it. And also, there's a point of equity in there where it makes the parking meter fine the same as the street meter ticket.
Thank you, Michael. One of the things we need to do before we proceed with this is to actually get some data and some numbers. We had hired a collection agency to try and find the, you know, get the money that is owed to the city, so we'll get some numbers. We may do a study session on this and then we will figure out how to move forward, but I thank Michael for using his experience in listening at the tolling review board to bring this to our attention. So we're done with the presentation part of the agenda for today, and I think, Lori, we now move to repository sales.
Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale?
Good morning, Council. Aaron Simbert, Executive Director of Erie Land Bank. The Erie Land Bank is looking to acquire the property on Prospect Avenue, index number It's a property that is adjacent to a property that the land bank is acquiring at 1958 Prospect Avenue. It's currently a vacant lot that is overgrown to the same level that the property we are acquiring has been and left unmaintained. The plan is to combine those two properties, rehabilitate 1958 Prospect and provide that and offer it out as a homeownership opportunity to a resident first-time homebuyer utilizing the land bank's programs and the redevelopment authorities' programs. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Is this a new approach for land bank in terms of acquiring properties through the repository sales? I think when we spoke out in the hall a couple of weeks ago, you said you were being more aggressive in spotting opportunities for how to acquire stuff, so maybe if you could just give a brief explanation of that for council and the members of the public?
Back in November, we met with representatives from the Erie County Tax Claim Bureau about repository lots and, you know, just the lots in general across the city, so, and we're looking at, you know, taking our lots and assembling them with some of the repository lots that are in the same areas and the way we can help the county get some of those lots off of the repository list and back into a tax-creating situation.
Does anybody on council have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other repository sales, anybody else want to speak to repository sales? Last call, repository sales. Now we move to public comment, I believe, and just be aware that at 9:30, we will pause for a public hearing.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie, and while you're looking at the parking fines, I think it's also important to look at how fairly the meters and regulated parking is, if you look at the area immediately around Erie Insurance and the Erie Arena, there's some non-regulated on-street parking, and then if you go as far, the meters go all the way to Myrtle Street on the west side, where people live, but over there where there are Erie Insurance people parking, there's free parking. That seems to me to be economic disparity at the least. So later on, we're going to be talking about some things going on at the Bayfront, and I don't know how many people I've asked, can we get a street light at the intersection of Holland and Front Street? If you're leaving, you leave the parking lot from the library and then you turn right and then you go south, or at this point mostly south, onto Holland Street at night, it is amazingly dark. There are no street lights. There are some lights focused west onto Front Street, east into the EMTA parking lot, but nothing for people who are using Holland, and that's busy, and in fact, it's going to get busier with all the things going on, and we're losing a pedestrian crossing with a traffic light because of the Central Bayfront project that's being forced on us. So I really, I've been, I've talked to the port, I've talked to EMTA, I've talked to the library, somebody from the MPO sent me an ownership, a picture of ownership, who owns which property there. I don't care who owns what. We need a light at Holland and Front Street, before you kill somebody. Thank you. I really appreciate that finally now there is a sidewalk at 12th Street going north on the east side of Green Garden after the seven years that I've been trying to get it built. It only goes halfway up the street, and had Public Works done its due diligence, it really would go further, and it really should go further because the enterprise remodel that triggered it is actually north of where the sidewalk ends. And I also am glad that after, I have a feeling Mr. Witherspoon, Councilman Witherspoon, had something to do with the fact that the Pennalec Pole in the middle of the other side of Green Garden between 12th and the Bayfront Parkway finally disappeared in whatever happened. Thanks. I just want to point out that Potras Greenhouse and I think one of the garden clubs had a post on Facebook about no mow May, and it's really nice to see the paradigm starting to shift that we need to look at how we manage our urban residential landscapes and our commercial landscapes to share the ecosystem with the microfauna and flora that support pollination, support biodiversity, and the city could actually lead the charge by not mowing as frequently and not mowing as early in the season. As a resident of the Baldwin Park neighborhood, I am concerned with what's going on there with the pickleball courts. Public Works Director Chuck Zisk said that the neighborhood will be consulted about, and it's nice to know we're going to have native plants and pollinator garden and all this other stuff, but what about the parking? What about the, you know, I would like to know how, what's going to happen to that area they denuded up on the east side of the park there by Burst, and thankfully, the illegally posted signs from various pickleball companies were taken down upon request, but the Baldwin Park neighborhood wants more than just to know what's going to be planted. We would like some involvement in the management of that park, and we would like to see if there's going to be porta-potties, they should be accessible as they should be in all the other parks, and we want to see the refuse containers placed around the park. Oh, and I didn't even get to talk about snow. Well, I'll talk about snow next time.
Next time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. My name is Anna Franz. I'm the Executive Director of our West Bayfront. I reside at 6658 Richardson Road in Fairview. I'm here to speak today about an item that's on your agenda, the allocation of ARP funding. First of all, I want to say we appreciate the very thoughtful and thorough approach council and the administration has taken to figuring out how to use the ARP funding generally to invest in the city. We're grateful for the recommendation by the project review team that our West Bayfront, in partnership with Bayfront Eastside Task Force, is included on the list of recommended projects that I believe you will be discussing later, later this morning. Our West Bayfront and Best work together very closely in the Bayfront neighborhoods, both east and west, to assist property owners to make repairs to their homes. As we've seen and as many of you are aware, the need for repairs is enormous in both of our communities. We've got some of the lower-income neighborhoods in the city with some of the oldest homes in the community, and we've also seen a decline in homeownership in our community, particularly among African-American households, and that's really changed the look and feel in both communities. The project that we are seeking funding for helps to address these challenges by filling in some of the gaps that Best and our West Bayfront have seen that are not addressed by other programs and that have previously been outside our capacity. What we've proposed is basically to increase proactive and supportive outreach and support for property owners, helping ensure that people who are most in need of resources are aware of those resources and able to secure them, emergency funding for repairs, and just generally being able to take advantage of the numerous programs that exist in the community. So we very much appreciate council's consideration of this project and look forward to hopefully working with you on it. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. My name is Jeremy Blazer. I'm the Executive Director of the Bayfront Eastside Task Force. I reside at 8480 Wasburg Road in Erie, PA. I'm also here to address the upcoming issue of the ARP funds that you're going to be discussing later this morning. I also thank you for considering our application. It's listed as our West Bayfront, but it's a collaborative effort. We're working together on this. We saw this as an opportunity to address some longstanding problems that we have talked about, how could we solve, and we saw this funding opportunity and thought it would be a good one. Our project is called Equitable Neighborhood Assets, and what we're really talking about is protecting the assets of our neighborhoods, which are both the homes, the residences within our neighborhoods, but also the residents, and to help seek and make sure that they are protected and are able to access fairly the resources. This also allows us to build on our collaborative efforts. So while we work with the other neighborhood groups and the other organizations throughout the city, Best and our West Bayfront have a history now of working together on funding and working together to allow resources to go further, to basically be more efficient and to make sure that these dollars impact more individual families. This also helps us meet the needs of those with less resources. While we all know there's an unprecedented amount of resources that have been released to the Redevelopment Authority and through the other city programs to help address issues, longstanding issues through ARP, our worry is that some of these funds won't make it to those that are most needy if we don't have extra resources, and what we're really looking at is hiring some staff that will help us get those resources to the right people. So we talk about how money might not solve all problems. We're looking at this as a way to make sure those that are not resource-rich, whether it's financial, educational, or their homes themselves, how can we make sure that we get these funds into the right places and address the issues ARP is intended to address? So we're basically here to hope that you appeal, that you do approve our project in a couple of minutes and to ensure that no neighbors are left behind. Thank you very much.
Good morning, City Council. Edison Nicholson, 233 East 30th Street. I'm here also to thank you for your consideration with the ARP funding. I also want to address another issue of what occurred yesterday at Erie High. I just feel every time that there's some incident like that, it's an eyesore on agencies or community service agencies that are serving young people, and I look at the situation and I immediately ask myself, what can we do as a community? And one of the solutions that I've come up with, and I've come up with this years ago, we have to come up with a community collective action plan. That community collective action plan has to enlist all of the youth service agencies that are dealing with young people, and we have to look at the root cause of the problem. Too many of us are operating on our own islands, and we need to figure out a way how we come together, and I'm willing to be at the forefront of something like this. Instead of us working apart from each other, we come together and we deal with this issue at hand because summer is not even here yet. So I just wanted to bring that out. Again, thank you for your consideration with the ARP funding.
Thank you. We have Art waiting here. Do we have, I hope that that clock is, do we have time to hear from Art?
Yes, 70 minutes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Council. Esteemed Council members, Madam Council President, Councilmen, Councilwomen. I'm a little confused this morning. I was at the DEI Commission giving some presentation, and I was here late. I apologize. I don't know which public comment session this is, but hopefully I can proceed and tell me if I'm out of order. I just wanted to let folks know that we are going to be celebrating Erie Earth Day, and I have flyers that if these could be passed out, I would certainly appreciate it. I don't know. For folks in the audience to know, Earth Day will be celebrated in Erie, April 23rd, from noon to 2:00. We're going to talk about climate needs, electric vehicle show, green groups, et cetera. And so that should be a good time on a Saturday for folks to come down and enjoy themselves. Secondly, I wanted to talk about police reform, just briefly, for several years, and most recently, in the past months, an activist group consisting of clergy, city council persons, law enforcement, NAACP, and Erie County United members have been meeting consulting on solutions with the mayor and his administration about policy reforms, the need for a diverse workforce, review and updating of police use of force issues, a move to increase non-law enforcement response to crisis events, and to form a civilian police review board. All parties have been willing, cooperative, and amiable, and we appreciate the administration's time. We are stalled out on these issues, however, until a newly hired DEI consultant provides advice. When the policy is not in step with justice, we have confusing for some and really unjust results for others. We must make changes to bolster community trust and faith. Third of all, and I don't know if this is appropriate time, but I wanted to mention that public access at the waterfront is imperative, must be a priority, and in the plans to develop our precious Bayfront property, it needs to be settled before permits and approvals are given on those issues for public access. And then if you indulge me a little bit further, Dr. Martin Luther And then if you indulge me a little bit further, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. delivered a speech in support of striking sanitation workers in Memphis. This is the 54th anniversary. On the day before he was assassinated, here are some of his last words. "Well, I don't know what will happen now. We've given some difficult days ahead, but it doesn't matter to me now because I've been to the mountaintop, and I don't mind like anybody. I would like to live a long life. Longevity has its place, but I am not concerned about that now. I just want to do God's will, and He's allowed me to go to the mountaintop. And I've looked over, and I've seen the promised land. I may not get there with you, but I want you to know tonight that we, as a people, we will get to the promised land, and I'm happy tonight. I'm not worried about anything. I'm not fearing any man. Mine eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord." Thank you, Council.
Yeah, I just have a brief note on accessibility. My name is Joe Giancarlo. I'm at 1019 East Fifth Street, and I'm here in person because last meeting, the Zoom link was unavailable, and it still does not seem to be resolved for the, the second meeting of the month. And I just thought that was kind of a bad look for transparency and accessibility, and would like to see that resolved for the coming Thursday meeting. Thank you. Joe Giancarlo, 1019 East Fifth Street. Thank you.
Sir, were you here for the repository sale? Is that what you were talking about? We weren't sure. You were just telling us that Zoom wasn't working, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Gary.
Hello, my name's Gary Bukowski, and I'm representing Sarah Reid Children's Center. And I just wanted to thank. Okay, and it would be 642 E6. And, but of course, Sarah Reid's all over the place, so it's, but I just wanted to thank you for your consideration of ARP funding so we could try to rejuvenate the St. Anne's School, which obviously we would hopefully make a big difference with the funding for a summer program this year, and appreciate any consideration that you can give us and also the kids that it would help, because it's not just for the program for the summer, but it's like a beachhead. If we can get back there, then we can start doing some things in that facility, which we own, and that would be one of the assets that we would be putting towards our commitment towards that, which is not a small one. So we appreciate it. And also, at the end of the month, April 30th, we got a Sarah Reid Day, which I know there's going to be some of our folks there that might have some freebies for the folks in the neighborhood if they want, because we do that in other places. We did it at the professional building this year. We're doing it at St. Anne's. So thank you for your consideration, and it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're ready to start the public hearing. Ed, do you ask people, or does Lori, how do, how do we do this to make sure we're following the process?
I can try. What we're going to do now is we're going to have a public hearing regarding a request for conditional use. The applicant is, I better make sure, Scott Development Corporation, and they are here. Anyone that wishes to offer testimony, which means anyone that wants to come up and speak about the development, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand, and the court reporter will swear you in.
Do you and each of you swear or affirm a testimony giving this matter with the truth, the whole truth, and that we got the truth?
Okay, Ed, if I may, this is regarding waterfront conditional use for Harbor Place Mini Golf located on two parcels adjacent to 130 East Front Street, 141046, 143, and 145. We also have a letter that I'd like to put into the record from a citizen, and we have Mr. Welsh here. We have a letter from him that states that the Planning Commission has voted to recommend this.
So if someone from Scott's Bayfront Development Incorporated could come forward, please, anytime you speak, this is recorded by a court reporter. If you would, state your name, give your address, and then offer your testimony. And so, Mr. Scott, if you would explain what's going on with the project, that would be very helpful.
Right. My name is Nick Scott, Sr., President of Scott Enterprises, and I'm here to just make a few general remarks before I have to go to a doctor's appointment, which I was unable to change. So I just wanted to say that basically, historically, our company has been engaged in development in Erie as a leading hospitality company for 60-some years. This particular, I mean, we've developed things like Splash Lagoon and Peak and Peak and Applebee's Restaurants and all sorts of hotels and so forth in the area. And I think that we have helped develop tourism in a pretty major way, investing tens, hundreds of millions of dollars and over a long period of time, taking risks and, and bringing some successes to Erie, such as Splash Lagoon being one of the top 10 water parks in the, in the country, indoor water parks. So in our continuing development and turning our focus to the waterfront on property that we purchased 23 years ago from the Pennalec Plant and everything, we started our development some years ago and finally completed the first phase of it in the last couple of years, and then we had the pandemic hit, and we were shut down, and there were all sorts of things happening. But we've developed the Hampton Inn and Suites Hotel, Oliver's Rooftop Restaurant, the Beer Garden, and also the continuation of that is in the planning now. There was a terrific response to that development that took place. We had the support of the community and the banks and the city of Erie, and so we were able to fashion this terrific project down there, which has really made a difference, I think, into the enjoyment of the public that comes down there and also to the citizens of Erie. And tourism also, we've improved things to do on the waterfront. I think the Convention Center has benefited from it, and so there's a nice synergy of activities going on down there. This year, we wanted to extend that to make it even better, and so one of the things we've come up with is a miniature golf course. And of course, there's a history of miniature golf courses on the waterfront down there that used to be there and was very successful. And then when the Port Authority had to take the land in order to create a road over towards the Convention Center, we saw an opportunity to replace that and to enhance the enjoyment for families that would come down to the Beer Garden, come down to Oliver's, and enjoy the outside. We had so many comments last year from the public saying, this is a really wonderful thing you've done. It makes me feel like I'm in a resort somewhere else in the country. I don't even believe I'm in Erie. This is terrific. And then boats would come up and park there. People could come by bicycle. People could walk, and it just turned out to be even better than we thought it would be in terms of reception from the public and from tourism. So what we're doing now is extending that concept by adding some things that will increase the recreational value of what's going on down there and, and make another step forward in creating a wonderful area on the waterfront and developing it as it has, should have been done years ago, but it wasn't ripe or wasn't ready. And so we're proud of what we're doing. My sons, it's been a family business with my father, Chris, originally, back in the 40s and 50s, that myself and my sons, Chris and Nick, have steadfastly stuck to the development of things that are good for the city, good for the county, good for the area, and good for our company. And so that growth has been good, and it's been well received, so we're very proud of it. So going forward, they'll go over all the details. We want everybody to be satisfied, but we want to be able to do this evolving development in such a way that we're not constricted and we're able to still provide what we promised we would in terms of open space and so forth. And so all those details can be determined and decided, but we, it is a short season every year. You have about three months in which to start recouping your investment or getting any kind of return on it. So we have some pressures to get this project, continue to make it work, and get it built so that it doesn't open in August, and then it closes in September, October. So I'm sure you understand that. And we're going forward, and we, we hope we get, you know, the cooperation and understanding, but we can say that the projects that we have created have been so well received that we think we're on the right track of this development, and we're always considerate of what the city thinks, what the county thinks, and we go forward with a lot of confidence that what we do will be well received and be of great benefit to the city and the county. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mike Sanford, 4721 Atlantic Avenue. I'm the surveyor and engineer that worked with the Scots to prepare this plan. So we're here this morning to discuss a conditional use application, as Mr. Betza indicated, to add mini golf commercial recreation to the Harbor Place project. The applicant, Scott's Bayfront Development, Inc. and Scott's Ohio, Inc., are owners of the property on both the north and south sides of East Front Street, east of state. As you know, this property is zoned waterfront commercial, and this zoning district is intended to promote residential, commercial, historical, and recreational uses. So as such, this commercial recreation use is directly in line and appropriate for this property. As I'm sure you know, the existing features on the property, as Mr. Scott said, are the Hampton Inn Hotel, Oliver's Beer Garden, and off-street parking areas. Our conditional use site plan that's on your screen there does show the, the location of the proposed mini golf in relation to the existing structures, accessory uses, and property lines. So the requirements of Section 306 in your zoning ordinance were discussed in detail at both your Design Review Committee and City Planning Commission in March of this year, and we presented information and details to show how the project is compliant with all the criteria set forth in Section 306. Just a few things to highlight about the mini golf that we're here to talk about today. As shown, it's at the northern end of the property. This property, the Scott's property, is not directly located on the water's edge. That property along the water's edge is owned by the Port Authority and the County of Erie. So Mr. Scott does not have an obligation for public access as, as your ordinance requires. He does not have direct frontage on the water's edge. But there is, on this plan here, the mini golf in the northern end. We do also have a small building. It's a clubhouse or ticket booth that you would go to to begin your play of the mini golf. We do provide off-street parking. The zoning, the zoning officer did review that, and we meet that, we also meet all setbacks. At our Design Review Committee meeting, we did present a landscaping plan that was prepared by Dahl Kemper Landscape Architects of Erie, and it shows various plantings, tree shrubs that are in line with the current project and meet your ordinance. So we, we have the same plant type, plant number, and placement as the current project. We're trying to theme that. And so as I mentioned, this project was reviewed, reviewed and recommended for approval by both agencies in March, on March 15th, and we look forward to Council's approval of the project.
Does anyone on Council have any specific questions for Mr. Sanford regarding technical aspects of the project?
I had a question, and I know that there is some type of construction that has started near the outdoor beer garden. Is, is that separate from the, what is that that's already going on? There's, you know, heavy construction equipment there? There's ditches and everything?
That is a restroom building for the beer garden, so it has nothing to do with what we're here today about. It's just for restroom facilities at the beer garden.
Okay. And I was, I know that this was, you know, passed the Planning Commission and the Design Review Committee, but you talked specifically about public access, but we have had questions in advance of this hearing about green space and that requirement for the conditional use for the hotel. And when, the way I read it, it was because there were additional buildings that were planned, and it, it struck me that it was like kind of a math equation, like for X amount of, you know, a variance for making the buildings higher, there would be X amount of green space. So could you explain to me, like, put that into terms that people could understand in terms of amount of green space? I don't think that that said where that green space had to be. It was like just a paragraph, but if you could tell us about the green space requirement that was agreed to in 2014 and where that is now and where it will be. Is it going to be different green space? Does the golf course count as green space since it'll be landscaped? Just if you could explain that, that would be really helpful.
Sure. I'll, I'll answer your first question on where, where the green space came from, the notion of it, and then probably Nick Jr. will talk about the placement. But you're correct. In 2014, the zoning hearing board gave a variance for a building height, and the requirement of this zoning district is it's a 50-foot maximum building height. So there's a lot of discussion in 2014. I was not at the meeting, but I did read the letter that you spoke of. There's a very simple paragraph that any, the floor area that's above 50 feet, that would require open space. That's the term, open space, not public access, not public park, just the term is open space. And so that's where that comes from. For the exact number, I don't know that I have that. I can go through my file with me as Nick speaks, but that's where it comes from, and it's termed open space. What it is, where it will be, I'll have Nick Jr. talk a little bit about that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick Scott, 6428 Fair Oaks Circle. So just on the open space, I think one of the things about this development that is, you know, unique only because of the times we're in, is that we designed about 10 years ago this project that had residential office, parking garage, and two hotels. And what, obviously, we got hit with COVID, which none of us expected, and the market demands, and the market completely changed on us. I think one of the things we did in the beginning was, we said, there will be residential right along the water's edge or waterfront, and I don't say waterfront, but wherever our land was on the north side. It was contemplated that there would be three-story residential units right along the water, frankly, right where the beer garden is, and the, the golf will, will be. And I think what we saw was an opportunity to keep that area open. We didn't want to have the three-story building there necessarily because the views, you know, through there are fantastic, and we stepped back and said, but what could we do differently to make it better and have people be able to access that, not just the two or three people that live in an individual residential unit down there? And so now, because of that, we were able to put in there a beer garden that we've had thousands of people visit and enjoy and be on the waterfront and really take in what is so great about Erie, which is, which is that water. And so when, when the zoning hearing board asked us to, to comply with certain open space, we, we agreed to that. And I, and I think today we have more than twice as much open space that is required. One of the things they did not require was where that green, or that where that open space would be, and frankly, it's good that they didn't because this plan is evolving like crazy. I mean, we had no idea. We thought we were going to build an office building. We thought we were going to build an office building down there, and we didn't. Obviously, COVID hit, and it just didn't make sense. We thought we'd have the residential along the waterfront there, and we said, wow, what if we pulled back and did something even better for the community? And now all that area down there is going to have views through it instead of having three- or four-story condominium units in front. So I think the changes that we made are very beneficial to the project and to Erie. And because that green, or that, I keep saying green space, but that open space was not asked to be identified and hasn't been identified, has allowed us to develop, like any development would go, it changes all the time. And so, you know, today, we're asking or talking about a golf element. Well, the nice thing about a golf element is there's no vertical really to it. So again, you can see right through it. You can, and I think the whole idea, one of the ideas behind the open space is that you can see through it and there's not these, you know, big buildings. So, you know, I think that we 100% will comply with that, you know, requirement that the hearing board did ask us to do. They did not ask us to identify that area. Furthermore, since this all happened, Pennelec, I'm sorry, not Pennelec, but PennDOT has come along and asked, and sort of mandating that we give them part of our land. So now the development had to change even more, and we lost land. That will be open space, but the PennDOT is taking over 20,000 square feet of our property that we will not be able to develop on. So that further kind of creates some challenges to the development. But I think at this point, the changes that we've made along the north side have created some, you know, and maintain those incredible views, and I think have taken care of some of the challenges that people thought would come up when we, if we would have built individual condominiums that private residences would have, private people lived in, because the public now has access down there because they can go to the beer garden and enjoy it, and they can go to the golf and enjoy it along the water's edge. So this plan continues to evolve, and, you know, we don't know what's next because we don't really know what the economy or the market has in store for us.
Thank you. I just, if it's, okay, I'd like to read. It is pretty, the open space thing is pretty open-ended. I mean, I'm no lawyer, but I do want to read it so that the public knows what this says. And then I did have a question. So it says, here's the condition. This is in 2014 when, I don't know, most of us weren't on council then, but for each addition, I think it should say additional square footage of real estate created by the height variance, an additional square foot of open space is to be dedicated to the public excluding parking lots. So that, there is a mention of the public in there. And so I guess my question is, even though your plan is evolving, when you presented this, there were the additional buildings that you were, you know, anticipating building. So my question is, again, kind of gets back to a math question. So what if the market conditions change and you do put up more buildings and they're higher than that, you know, than what the ordinance says? Wouldn't you then have to create additional?
Yes.
Open space? But how would you interpret, well, I shouldn't ask you because you aren't a lawyer, I don't think you're a lawyer, but that phrase, dedicated to the public, because I think that that is, doesn't say, it's not the same as saying public access, but I mean, you're going to put aside a saying, this is dedicated to the public, so. And I'm not trying to be sarcastic.
No, no.
I just think, I think looking at this language, I'm like, how did this get written this way? It was a little, I don't know, kind of vague, but also very specific in terms of square feet. So if you could just, how you would say what you mean by dedicated to the public? Not you, but what you think they meant? Or how you'll dedicate something to the public?
Well, yeah, I think, so the plan is in its infancy or the development. We only have built one building. So there's so much open space available, and I think the open space was contemplated to be open space. So in other words, if you take that piece of property, what the city didn't want is they didn't want there to be buildings that covered the entire area so that there were never any views and it basically blew out. If you picture Hammont, which I love, I love UPMC, I love Hammont, but it is a, it is just a wall of buildings, you know? And so I think the concept was, if you're going to build this out, we would appreciate it that if you went up high, which would hurt the views, any square foot you build above 50 feet, I think it's 50 feet, that then you would give us that square feet in space that you wouldn't build on. And we're complying with that, and we will comply with that in the future. And what I'm telling you is, the only square footage that's built above 50 feet is 25,000 square feet, and we have two to three times that much open space at this point. So there is open space, if you go down there now, all over the place. And so I think that the, the idea was that we would not build across the entire property. So the next time we come in, in the future, and we say, hey, we'd like to build a building that's seven stories, then however many square feet are built above the fifth floor will have to then be added to that 25,000 square feet. And so we'll have to get really creative on how that works. But at this point, it's such, we're such in its infancy that there's so much open space down there that, you know, it's basically, most of the project is open space. So I would say that this idea is probably more important later down the road, but right now, the good news is, we didn't even develop what we originally said along the water's edge. We ended up building something that was, in some ways, open space. When you look at golf, there's nothing vertical, so it's open. The beer garden is open to the public. The residential would not have been. It would have been closed off and gated, and nobody would have been able to access that, except the people that live there. And frankly, I think that's terrible. I think that water, that area is great for, to go down there and sit down and watch the sunset. You don't have to have anything to drink. You can sit with your friends and just enjoy the scenery, as opposed to, that would have been someone's backyard.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt your testimony, though. Do you have anything else to testify to?
I don't think so. I can certainly answer any more questions.
Questions from council members to Nick Jr.? Nick, one of the things I was thinking of, I've become a big fan of field trips. One of our council people has taken new council members on some field trips. Ed Kissel took us on a field trip. So it might be helpful, you know, depending on, even if we vote today or don't vote, whatever, you have another public hearing coming up. If you want to walk us around there so we can see what's up there.
When you said field trip, I thought you meant like kids going on a field trip? But to be honest with you, we do this at Splash Lagoon, and I'm sure we would do this with the golf. We host free of charge thousands of kids from the Erie School District, and every school district is given 50 to 100 tickets to give out to kids who, you know, don't, aren't truant, who get good grades and things like that. So this is the type of thing where when they go down, the golf, I mean, when they go down to see the tall ships or they go down to see the museum, that we'll work with the museum and the school district to get those kids to be able to come and enjoy a round of golf during their field trip. And that's one of the things that's great about this down on the waterfront. It just gives people more to do. I thought you meant, when you said field trip, I thought you were talking about kids.
I did kind of, "field trip" in quotes, so it looks like.
But you guys want to go on a field trip.
Yeah.
We want to go on a field trip.
She may be, she may still be talking about kids because it's some of the new council members. Hey, my daughter's seventh-grade classroom, Strong Vincent, was at Splash Lagoon on Monday. So thanks for that, by the way, as you bring it up.
Cool. Is there any, Mr. Scott, is there anyone else that you wish to present regarding the proposed development?
There's other questions to be answered, otherwise it's pretty simple.
And you remain here under oath if there are questions. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer testimony regarding the proposed conditional A lot of times, people say for or against. I'm not looking to lock anybody into any position. If anyone wishes to offer testimony of any kind, we would like to hear that.
Do I have to give my address again? Fred, it's at 1738 West 23rd Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. So I was down there Monday, I think, with Kathy Schaff, and every time I've shared this site plan with somebody, the response I got was, where the heck are they going to put the darn thing? It is rather smushed in there against the sidewalk. And I guess I don't quite interpret open space available to the public quite the same way that the Scots do. I don't see this putt-putt course as open space available to the public. I see it as a reduction in the quality of my experience when I walk along the bayfront. It's my habit to park on Front Street, north of the library, and walk around the fencing of the boat, and then walk along the water there, and then go back up and get up to Dobbin's Landing that way. And I can't really do that right now because of the construction. But I can, I was just there Monday where this construction's going to be, and Kathy and I were just scratching our heads, thinking, where the heck are they going to put this? It's awfully, seems awfully tight. But it does not, to me, speak of open space available to the public. It speaks of double dipping on the part of Scott saying, we're providing this wonderful thing. When I walk alongside the water north of the Sheraton in the summertime, they kind of push their tables out onto the sidewalk sometimes, encroaching on my ability to enjoy the bayfront. And maybe people appreciate the noise from the music and whatnot from Oliver's several months of the year, but all year round, I utilize that area. And I am concerned, if you guys are going to take a field trip, notice that this is a resolution, it's on your agenda today, to be voted on today. So if you need more information about this project, maybe you want to delay voting on it. But if you want to know who put this on, who got this condition, it was Lisa Austin. She was on the zoning hearings board, and she fought for this. Why are they putting it here? Why don't they put it over on the other side there, on the other side of the water there, on the other side of Front Street? They have this whole big property up there where they're no longer going to build an office building. You know, there's, I just, I think I just shared the site plan with Mr. Nelson, but they, I just think it's too much right there by the water. And I understand there are already, people park on the sidewalk, the people that want to use Oliver's. But if they do want to make a good-faith gesture about public access in Oliver's, I suggest that these restrooms that they're going to build, that they make them available to the public, because we could sure use a restroom down there. That'd be a great place for a public restroom. But I really urge you folks to, if you're going to take another look, take another look, but don't vote on it today. I listened to the planning commission meeting, and it was a very strange conversation about open space, green space. There was almost like, oh, no, you don't need to add anymore. That's okay. You've done enough. It's like, what the heck is this? These are people representing us on the planning commission? I was very disturbed by the accommodating tone. They, Scott may be doing all kinds of things in the community, and I appreciate their support of the Philharmonic. However, I, that's part of my experience at the bayfront, and I don't see that putt-putt as an enhancement. It's nothing that enhances my experience. Neither is Oliver's, but I'll put up with it. But I don't see having that putt-putt right up to the edge of the sidewalk as something that's enhancing my public enjoyment of the bayfront. And there's precious little area along the bayfront to enjoy anymore. Thank you.
Fred, uh, hey, which thing were you talking about being so tight? I'm looking at the pictures right now. Were you talking about the aerial, the zip line?
No, no, we're not talking about the zip line.
The putt-putt course?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm looking at the picture, so I'm just, the map of it. All right.
Is there anyone else that wishes to offer testimony?
Does she wish to offer testimony? All right.
Good morning, council members, council president, council. My name is Ed Kissel, 2815 Sigsbee. This is the Scott plan that the bayfront ordinances reference, and also, I believe, the height restriction was part of. And it shows the plan that was proposed in order to get the proper zoning in place. And in the document, there are actually three parcels of land. The one that you're dealing with, which you don't have a record of, is the five acres that is north of Front Street and adjacent and west of the library museum. The other parcel to the south, on the south side of Front Street, is four acres, and the other remaining three of the 12 is the Holland Street Pier. We're talking about the five acres where the hotel sits. And in the plan, in the press release that was done on November 27, 2013, by Scott Enterprises, they presented their plan to the public, and council eventually approved some of the items that they needed. But what I'm here to talk about is a large one-half acre park, public park, that is in the footprint of where the proposed golf course is being put. And that is a prime piece of land for the general public that was pledged in this news release. So I asked council to consider that. It's one-half acre. It's 200 by 200 feet or whatever dimension you want to come up with, but it's now proposed for the putt-putt golf course. There's also another park that's proposed down there, right off of State Street, that hasn't been done. And there's a third one on the drawing on that parcel of land. So there's three public parcels, a park, and I take it as a public park, as a park where you could go and sit and enjoy whatever you'd want to enjoy. But the grassy area that is being proposed for the putt-putt takes away, in my opinion, anyone who wants to go down there and watch fireworks and put a blanket on the grass instead of the sidewalk. By the way, so you know what the public access is down there? That was put in many years ago, and it's the widest public access along the bayfront. It's about 21 to 23 feet from the water's edge back to the Scott property. So there's plenty of public access as far as walking around the perimeter of that. We saw to that many years ago when council was good enough to do the zoning for the waterfront. They showed on their plan as a harbor walkway, which is fine, but it's open to the public all around the site. So what I'm asking council is to possibly get an answer on where and when would these public parks go in, because they're not on the current proposal for the golf course that you were presented with. The other thing, there was public money put in this. I believe the Scots got $5 million for this site to build, to build their hotel, and that held the project up prior to them getting it, and then they went ahead and did what you see on the waterfront. As far as that footage goes, over and above 50 feet, when that was discussed and it was brought up by the zoning hearing board, that square footage was to be given for green park space, not open space. There's a difference between visible space and actually physical using space. So my interpretation was that it would be put in a green park area or added to the parks that are down there that have been proposed. So that is my question to the Scots, is when will the public parks be built and why were we shown a two, a half-acre park across the nicest area to enhance public use? And now that is being eliminated if council decides to take that into consideration. I thank you. So I thank you.
Is, is, Mr. Scott?
Good afternoon, good morning. My name is Chris Scott, 4502 Commodore Drive, Erie PA 16505. I just want to mention that what we're trying to do is comply with all the ordinances here. This is private property, I guess. We've been paying taxes on it for over 25 years. And all we're asking is for this specific project, nothing else in the future, buildings, office buildings, parking garages, is that. We are very willing to comply with the requirement of the open space definition, which is the calculation of anything over 50 feet of square footage, which is approximately 26,000 square feet. And as of now, even if we were to put that golf course in that location, we have over three acres, or about 150,000 square feet of open space now. So we are more in compliance with what is required. Also, that press release, I think from back in 2013, was just a rendering. Things have evolved. That's almost 10 years old. And we want to make the place down there very nice and accommodating to the people of Erie. And we're here today to say, we want to comply with the regulations of the open space of 25,000 feet. And with what we're trying to do just today, we have the space available to do that and to comply. So, and like I said, that park rendering was nothing that was required. It was something that we had put on a drawing years ago and were contemplating. But we do want to beautify the area down there and make it, you know, very special for Erie. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You go first.
So, I under, we've heard the language, and I understand the mandate, and that, and first of all, thank you for your willingness to comply.
Of course.
But just as a, well, not as concern, but as a footnote, I think that it would be beneficial to, you know, your group and your company to provide a public, not, a space for the public. Because when you generate foot traffic and people to your, to your footprint, you know, they might go have a beer at the beer garden, they might want to relax between playing putt-putt and things like that, and everyone doesn't drink, you want to do family friendly. So I think that this would be beneficial for you to maybe ink out a space there that the public, or even that the people who are standing at your hotel can, you know, spread out a blanket and have a picnic, you know, out in view of our beautiful lake.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think that's, unless I'm misunderstood, I think that's the idea of this open space, which is open to the public, a green space, which is not encumbered by a building or other type of, you know, facility. So I think that that's really, we're kind of on the same page, and that's an idea of where we have to locate this actual open space. And we have four to five times the amount that's required as of now, and we don't have any immediate plans for anything else as far as buildings go. So that is kind of the idea of identifying a space for exactly what you said.
Could you answer Ed Kissel's question, though, about are there public parks planned? And I know you said that was 2013, things changed, things evolve. I think one of the things that we've struggled with as council and what irks and irritates members of the public is that people think that we're going to forget, or that we're not going to, thank heavens, we have the institutional wisdom of Ed Kissel and the sons of Lake Erie, and he's able to pull out a press release that says this, I mean, it was, it's, he read it to us. It said, "Parks, not open space." We're at a time where there is lack of trust in institutions. It's scary to me. I mean, I've made the case that, you know, there's a whole bunch of stuff going on in terms of democracy, and someone's probably going to say, what does a miniature golf course have to do with democracy? But it has to do with somebody saying something, and then, you know, nine years later saying, well, that's not really what we meant, or our plans changed, or when we're talking about open space, we're just saying that it's open and you can see it. So I would like to know, are there going to be some public parks? We're at a time where we have, we're spending government money, ARP funding, to increase parks. We aren't calling it open space. We aren't saying we're going to take ARP funding and you're going to, there's going to be some open space here. We have open spaces where we're tearing down houses. We could say, ah, that's open space. We don't have a building there. I really think we need to have an answer as to, or at least a proposal, or at least a pledge, that what was told to the public, and I'm not picking on Scott Enterprises, we've had, we, the Port Authority barrels through and says, now we're going to take away parking spaces, and regular people don't have a say. So could you let us know?
Well, sorry.
What can happen with that language that specifically said, "public parks," right? Not wide open spaces. So I think that it's incumbent on us as representatives of the people who elected us to not be against development. I told you when I first, I said, this is cool. I was quoted in the paper saying it's cool. But we also have to make good on, and we have to be the watchdogs, so.
I mean, like my brother said, this plan is constantly evolving. Things change in the economy and market conditions. We're try, I can't comment right now, today specifically, on a public park, but we will be in compliance with all the ordinances of the city, and we want to do our best job to make it an environmentally friendly development where the public can enjoy it. Even today, with the beer garden, although it's not considered an open space, it's open to the public. There's no coverage charge. People bring their dogs in there, they can use the restrooms. And even, I know it doesn't define as an open space, but we're trying to beautify the entire Bay Front. So to answer your question about a specific park, I can't do that today, but I can tell that we will be in compliance with all the ordinances, and we want to do our best job to beautify it and make it open to the public.
Jasmine, I think?
Thank you for coming and having the hearing. As a 28-year-old who's lived in the city, I have seen where the residents have their access taken away for private development. Now, our waterfront is one of the key items that the public has access to. As somebody who travels, and I go and I see other cities and states, I can honestly say that Erie is a time capsule. We have not allowed bad decisions to put us in the predicaments that other cities are undoing currently. So for me, I need to make sure that the public has access to the water, our waterfront. I have individuals that I work with on a daily basis who are low income. They're intellectually disabled, they have autism. They enjoy the water view. And right now, there's a lot of development that's going on down there that is going to minimize their access. So in order for you to acquire the land that you received back then, you said, "public parks." So I have seen where developers and entities will say one thing to get something, and then they change the plans. So for me, I need more information in order to be able to do anything today, honestly.
With all due respect, us purchasing that property in 1999 was a, had nothing to do with, you said we were, we had to prove a plan of a park. We purchased a private piece of property with future development that didn't happen for 17 or 18 years. So, and like I said, we'll do whatever in compliance and ordinance that the city asks. It's just very difficult for me today, standing here, to discuss specifically if and specifically where a park is. I mean, it is private property, to be honest, and we pay taxes on it every year. And we want to be in compliance and make it beautiful and accessible to the public as much as we can. So I just, it's hard for me to answer about it. With the, I'll just add, I'll add to that real quick. The zoning hearing board, it says in there that for each additional square footage of real estate created by the height variance, an additional square foot of open spaces to be dedicated to the public excluding parking lots. I think that's what you're referring to when you talk about. It's the ordinance that was written.
I have to see.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm just reading it. But I think what we're saying today is, we will comply with that. We are, the actual project is in its infancy, like I said. We were supposed to have, at this point, an office building, a parking garage, residential along the waterfront, a residential tower, another hotel, a restaurant, you know, in front of the, where they parked the Princess. So there was a ton that was going to go on this that just hasn't yet. So as we move forward, and we come back to you with the next phase of this project, which could be a year, two, three, we will have to show you that this is, because as we continue to take land, we'll be taking land away from having the ability to put that 25,000 square feet somewhere. So my only point is that as, because this thing's young, we have plenty of space for people to come down and enjoy themselves. We have more than is required. And so if, and I think I heard Liz, you say, well, show us where that's going to be. Well, I guess what I'm saying is, there's so much of it that if I were to show you where it is now, it would sort of handcuff us, handcuff us on our, on our future development. And so I'm glad we didn't do the residential on the waterfront, because I like the fact that it's open. I mean, I'm talking about right up north. But at this point, there's so much open space for the public to access that I don't think we have to dedicate it. There's plenty down there. And that's, you know, because we're not, we're not taking much of the land right now.
I do have one question. Did you say Pendott took some of your land?
No, Pendott.
Pendott. On the land, the five acre land, or across on the other side, on the four acre, on the south? Where'd they take it off, the five acre, what we're talking about?
Right, but the four is, is part of the entire block. It doesn't matter what it's south or north.
Yeah, but you're talking, you're not talking this specific site that they took property.
It's one site.
What's the one site? The location?
If you look at the zoning variance in 2014, at the very top of that document, it lists a multitude of tax parcels. So the variance was actually issued for the entire project, a multitude of tax parcels. On the north side of Front Street and the south side of Front Street, they're all listed. So that's what Mr. Scott's saying, is the variance was project-wide. Mr. Kissel's trying to associate parcel-specific. But the variance, as written, was for the entire project, parcels both north and south.
Yes, I understood that, and that's why I asked the question about the math equation about the square footage for, because that variance had, I think, four buildings in it. So assuming you're going to put more stuff up in the air, there would have to be more...
I believe what they may be saying with the new alignment of the Bay Front Parkway being moved into the railroad area, so forth and so on, it may be in that area, but I don't see anything in this specific plan that we're talking about. But I do have another question for the Scots. Did you not ask the Erie Western Port Authority, who owns part of that golf course area that you're looking for, for an easement or for an agreement to either lease or do something with an additional 10 foot, six foot of green space?
Yeah, what, I think, Ed, what you're referring to is the way the golf course is set along the waterfront. In an effort to keep it, and I think the lady before said, it looks confined and kind of put together, the designer of this golf course works to make sure that it's efficient, so that there's not a lot of open space between holes, because if we have open space between holes, then the amount of land that we take away from open space is even more. So it's very efficient, the way it's built. In addition, the way it's built, it lends itself to move, to need a little bit more land in order to make the walkways and the holes work. Because when you go to a golf course like that, when you design it, it needs to flow. You don't want to walk from here all the way to there to get to the next hole. And so in an effort to get that, what Ed's referring to is, the Port Authority has offered to, well, is in the process of offering to lease us some feet so that we can make the golf course just a little bit more workable, as opposed to having to walk further for the next hole. And they've said they would, it would work with us, although we haven't gotten any agreement from them at all.
So you need that agreement. I mean, we're being told, you got to do this right today.
Yeah, we don't, so...
But you don't have the agreement yet from the Port Authority for, am I correct?
The Port Authority, Brenda told me that they met and that they are providing us with the agreement within the week. And it's a simple, sign off and go ahead and you can use the easement. But it's, it's, it wouldn't change, if we didn't get that, we could still build it. What we're trying to do is say, if we use those two or three feet, it would help the flow of the course and the layout. Not necessary or mandatory for us to have that in order to build this in any way.
Ed Betza, not Ed Kissel. It's my understanding that we could, we could attach a condition to the condition, depending on what condition we're in. I'm being funny, but...
Before we get to that, I think it's probably best if we can complete the testimony.
Okay.
And then we can have a discussion about what the, what the standards are.
And can I just mention one thing? Councilman Trup had to leave for a meeting at the school district, so there's six of us now, so just, just so the public knows.
Pardon?
I just wanted to let people know that we're, we have six council people now, because Councilman Trup had to go to a meeting at the school district.
No, I would just conclude that that green space is valuable. I believe it was pledged in order to get the approval of council at the time for the project. I'm not against the Scots projects. I think they've done well down there. They did put a beer garden in, in that media area. There's a parking lot. And one question I asked the solicitor was, the requirement for the parking for the golfers, if it's an 18-hole, I know Jake is back there, or what the requirement is for parking, either on that parcel or on property that they own, that they could put the required parking on. And a quick history of that was the putt-putt that was over on the west side of State Street. There was a legal ruling and all on that. And what had happened was, the zoning hearing board eliminated any parking because of parking in Wolverine Park, which is another issue. But I would like to know if this agreement includes a parking area, not the beer garden parking area that's now currently there, or will another parking area for a requirement for the 18-hole golf course be requested? Or is it going to be requested?
In, in what they wrote us, they said that it was going to be complied with the parking. They write it all out for us, and they cite it 306.60.
Where at, though?
And the stuff that council has on that.
On the south side?
We supplied the zoning officer with the required parking. Beer garden, mini-golf, hotel, because it's based in the ordinance, in the mini-golf specifically, it's based on the number of players. And so Mr. Welsh said two players per hole, and then it was one parking space for every two players. So we, in that specific use, we need 18 parking spaces for the mini-golf. Where they are, well, on the property in total, we have parking on the north side of Front Street and the south. And we need 195 spaces for the, for the current project, and we have over 300 off-street parking on the property. So the ordinance does not require them to be next to the mini-golf. It has to be within a certain distance. I can't remember if it's 400 or 500 feet of the use. So the south, parking on the south side of the road does qualify, but there is more than enough park, off-street parking for all the uses on the property.
Okay. It's going to be handled, in essence, on the south side, I take it.
Yeah, the north and south.
I know, I know you do. But you put that special parking lot in, I believe, for the beer venue.
All right, all right, hold on, hold on, hold on. One of the nightmares of my job is, well, not my job, the poor court reporter, is that this is testimony. It's very informal, but we can't be going back and forth. So if you do have a question, you can ask it, but then, I like the podium, but please don't... don't go back and forth.
So.
So hold on and just identify yourself for the court reporter.
Freda Tepfer again. So for this project, which is part of what Scott received $5 million in RACP funds, I suggest also as part of your research before you vote, that you ask Frank and Cam to go back to find the YouTube of the zoning hearings board meetings from that time and listen to it. Listen to what was said at the meeting.
Freddie, you're talking about the 2014 meeting.
13, 14, whatever it was. Yeah. I I would I'm I'm I would bet it's still around. It may not be posted to their to their page, but I'll bet it's still there because I I was able to access some old YouTube videos of meetings for quite a long time. So I would in my favorite area, Green Garden. So I would suggest you do that. And I do hope that we see a sign posted saying public restroom because it sounds like this is a restroom open to the public. But I heard park. I did hear park. And you only have one shot to get this right, so you don't have to vote on it today. You can table it.
Madam President?
Madam President?
In the future, this banter is great, but may I suggest that from now on, we have these open meetings with zoning board because all this conversation is after the fact. The zoning board already said.
Well, no, it isn't after the fact. It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
As required.
But the point is, yeah, I thought I had the floor. Thank you. The point is, the zoning board okayed it. So if we had all these questions, then we should have been at the zoning board meeting and got that all clarified before we had this dog and pony show here.
I object to it being called the dog and pony show. This is a public hearing as is required. It's not a dog and pony show. Here we are back to trying to shut the voices of the people we need to listen to. I know it's taking a while. What are we elected for? We're elected. This is our job.
We're doing well.
Madam President?
This isn't like when we're debating something and we can say, okay, call the question. It's a public hearing, and I learned a lot that I didn't know. Okay, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you. I've known Mr. Ed Kissel for many years, and I consider him Mr. Bayfront. He knows it east to west. As a councilman, I should follow the laws on the book, which means if Scott Enterprises follows the ordinance in waterfront to a T, they have done nothing wrong. They have not broken a law that we have on our books. We need to keep that in mind. Thank you, Madam President.
Is there is there anyone else that wishes to offer testimony?
I I this is the thing I forgot to say before. This is Freda Tepfer. One more piece of homework. I suggest you talk to the owner of the Wolverine Marina and ask him about his anticipated tenancy in the coming seasons, based on how people have responded to the change in the waterfront environment because of the noise from the beer garden. I just suggest you explore that as part of your homework.
Is that the end of individuals wishing to offer testimony?
We don't have anybody on Zoom who wants to testify? There's questions in the chat, but.
So let me just at least frame it for the benefit of council. First of all, this is private property. It is not public property. So it is regulated by our rules, and they must comply with those rules. This is not a public access issue because there is not frontage on the water. So public access is not an issue before you. In order for you to be able to make a decision, this must go before the design review committee. It has done so, and at least in this case, the design review committee recommended approval. In order for this case to come before you, it must go to the planning commission. It has done so, and in this case, the planning commission recommended approval. Any proposed use, this this property is owned waterfront conditional, and that makes it kind of a unique situation. With waterfront property, all there is no permitted use. There are a list of uses that are identified as conditional uses. And the city zoning ordinance defines conditional use is a use which by virtue of its own peculiar characteristics may be permitted in certain areas only after review and approval by city council. So with the zoning ordinance, what the city did was say anything along the water has got to come before city council for approval. So it has to do two things. One, it has to be a use that's identified in the list of things that could be done, and this is a use that is that meets that listing as a commercial recreational use. It then has to come before council and must have a public hearing where you hear from the developer and you also hear from any other concerned citizens. The we've had a lot of discussion about open space and about zoning, or at least a little bit about zoning. This is not debatable by anybody. You have to comply with all of the zoning requirements. And so if if there was any deviation, that does not come, you do not have the ability to grant a deviation from the ordinance. They must comply with the zoning, all setbacks, all of those types of things. They also must comply with any other requirements imposed by any other authority. That's not debatable. And so the one limited situation we have is that they sought to go above the height limit, and they got permission from the zoning hearing board, a separate entity. Their.
Which height limit? Are we talking about the 25-foot aerial easement? Or are we we're talking about the building in the hotel?
50 feet. So anytime you go above that, what the zoning hearing board said is you have to have some open space. Where that open space is and how high that building is can change over time. And so conceivably, I could build a 100-foot building. I've got 50 feet over the limit, and now I change it and I tear off that 100 feet. That would change the circumstances. But at any moment in time, at any moment at all, from now till the end of time, unless the zoning hearing board tells us otherwise, any time that development goes above the 50 feet, they must be able to identify existing open space. Open space is vertical. It's it's meant that it is not blocking a view. We do not specifically define open space in our ordinance, but open space is long longstanding concept that it is a vertical to prevent blockage of views. They also must comply with any granting agency. We've heard talk about a $5 million grant, and I'm personally not involved in that. I don't know the specifics. But whatever the requirements of that are, if there are any, that also must be complied. So any granting requirement, any zoning hearing board requirement, and any zoning requirement are not debatable. They must comply with all of that. And if you were to approve it, that approval would be contingent upon ongoing compliance with those things. So the only thing really before you is, does this use work? Does it fit? And are there any conditions necessary to ensure, in essence, harmony in the neighborhood?
But Ed, it's before us, but we are not required to vote on this today.
You you have.
Correct?
You are correct. You have it before you. When you are prepared to vote, you make that vote. I would either ask that you approve it today, deny it today, or or table it today. Do something to identify your plan. But I have no objection to you voting on it today. That would be done by a verbal motion. There would be a motion from the floor, a second, and a vote. If you are not going to vote on it today, then there would need to be a verbal motion to table, a second, followed by a vote.
At what point do we begin to vote?
Well, you you're the boss, so whenever whenever you deem it appropriate, you could do it now, you could do it at the end of the meeting, and as Ms. Allen's pointed out, you could identify a later date.
We we so we got that email yesterday that was like seven, eight pages long. You know, it was so is that is that public or is that just our information?
I'm not sure. An email from?
Scots. City of Erie, application for waterfront conditional use approval. It has the pictures that we saw.
Oh, you have a copy? Yeah, that that is their application. That is certainly public document.
Okay, that's all public? Okay, thanks. So so I can share that with people that had questions that it that were addressed in that document?
You can. It is a public document.
Okay, cool.
Are we prepared to do something at this point in the meeting? And the public hearing? Is there any more testimony? Do we have to do that?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's not fair. We we need to close the public hearing at this point so the court reporter does not have to stay and watch the entire. Sorry about that, Cecilia.
Thank you.
That's that's on me. So any additional charges, that's me, but.
We have.
I question what you said. Council has the authority to condition what has been presented, even though this design review and the planning commission have approved it, final decision by city council.
I didn't say anything to the contrary, but that is that is correct.
And I think that was my question, Ed Betza, was couldn't we put in a condition here that we would approve this if there is a plan presented for a public park? Or two public parks? Or more specific understanding of what? You explained what open space is. I do think that it would be useful to go back if we could. We have the minutes from that zoning hearing board, but if there is a video of it, I I think that would be useful to us because there was intent there.
So can I? Yeah, so like it was laid out, it's it's private property, so there is no place for a public park. So but I, as I asked the Scott family that, you know, maybe that's something that we can look at, actually, while you're waiting for phase two, phase three, phase four, outline a space that can be used and utilized for the public. And I don't think that that's any that that's I don't think it's too much to ask.
To to answer Ms. Allen's question, if if we want to talk about whenever a question's posed to a lawyer of can we, it it seems to raise the issue of the legality of something. If we're going to discuss the legality of anything, that would be done in executive session outside of a public session, which we could we might be a unique day. We we could also do that. We could recess the meeting and go into executive session to discuss any legal issues.
I think there are those exceptions for, you know, the for executive session. It was always my understanding that it didn't have to be done that way, but that I'm talking as a journalist. It's not as.
Well, as a general rule, I don't like executive sessions. I think I I don't like them. But if we're going to talk about what can we and what can't we do legally, that's not going to be done in open session.
But I thought you did tell me that we could, in open session, we could talk about something that we wanted to attach to this.
You can, absolutely. But if you're going to ask me if that condition is legally permissible or not, then that would not be done in open session.
And I do want to point out that one of the problems is that the Port Authority and all the authorities go into executive session all the time, which is why we don't know what happens behind closed doors.
Madam President.
Don't forget, we still have to end the public hearing at some point.
Yeah. Madam President, as I said earlier, I have to vote on what laws we have on the book. That's my job as a councilman. I can't break the law. And they have not broken any of the ordinance and waterfront whatsoever, regardless of what I may want personally to see down there. That doesn't come into play. I am ready to vote, Madam President.
Is that a resolution?
If it's that's what I asked, do we have to close the meeting or and then vote? Or do we?
We would close the public hearing. And so at this point, we can close the public hearing, and then we would resume our council meeting.
What you said.
Motion to close the public hearing? Do we?
Close.
I I think you could just identify that as close. There's no additional testimony. The record is generated, and then you resume council meeting.
Close. All right. So we close, right? Madam President, I'd like to make the motion to approve the project of Scott Enterprise on the waterfront in accordance with the laws on our books and the recommendations that we have received.
Second.
Discussion?
Second.
Right, I heard you say second, and now discussion, correct?
Right.
Discussion. There's no discussion?
We've been discussing.
No, no, because I think that this is important because, first of all, there's six of us, so we could end in a tie. I think we need to discuss what's next, so not to big labor anything, but we could end up in a. Michael, you were going to speak first.
You threw me off. But but I think we've had a lot of testimony. And and so like I guess it's 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 time to vote, you know, some things. So there's Mr. Betza would testify to this, but there's what you call the spirit of the law in the letter of the law, in which, you know, one is dot, 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 what is written, and then one is, you know, what is written plus the context and all the other concepts that were may been attached to that language at that particular time. And I just, you know, I want what's best for the waterfront. I don't see the negative of having this on the waterfront, but I'm still appealing to, you know, Scott Enterprises to, you know, hear our voices, you know, to and that, you know, we consider, you know, this is the last part of our bayfront that is undeveloped and that the citizens of Erie have access to. And a lot of people live in communities where, you know, east and west of our city, where they can still walk down to their bayfront, hop in their hop in the lake and take a swim and boat and do a bunch of other things. And we, because of our urbana, have, you know, don't have those same privileges. And so it's even more important that we have access and that the general public has a place to go along our waterfront.
Thank you. And I I want to follow up, I'm sorry, on the the suggestion that these questions by council should have been raised by us at the planning commission meeting or at the counsel should have been raised by us at the planning commission meeting or at the design review commission meeting. I did not know about the open space requirement until Freda asked the question earlier this week in a face, she sent me a message about it. I didn't there, I was not there in 2014. I didn't know what that language was. I didn't know it was so vague. So, I agree with what Michael said. I don't like the fact that, that it's like, if you don't vote for this today, you're holding up development. We can't continue to operate that way. We can't. We have a whole plan that's going to roll out about public spaces with ARP funding, which is public money and public spaces. So we cannot have our arms twisted. I don't like having my arm twisted. And I felt today that up until this point, it was very cordial, but then we're told, well, that, that language doesn't matter and this doesn't matter, and we changed our plans. I'll vote yes, but there's another public hearing coming up in two weeks for another project, and I'm not going to be arm twisted into saying, we're going to have a public hearing and then you're going to vote on that that day, just so everyone knows. Anybody else have any comments?
I have to agree with you, Madam President. I don't like being forced into a vote, so I will be voting no, just because I wanted it to be tabled for us to have more community input, for our constituents to get back to us and report on how they feel about this public hearing and what's about to happen down there. So I do agree that we do have to start doing better. Decisions that are made in the past are decisions that we pay for today. And as somebody who has seen past things done and been pushed through, it really bothers me to see that the narrative is still trying to be the same. I wasn't elected for my community to have things just be shoved down our throats and it just be done how it's supposed to be. So I have hope for us to continue to grow and learn, and hopefully the community will be more vocal on what they want to see happen. Thank you.
Madam President?
I think we're ready to vote, yes?
Well, that's what, I would like a point of clarification. Do I have a motion from the floor to vote or to approve? Or, I'm not really sure.
My motion was to approve the plan as presented.
Okay. So I have a motion sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, to approve the waterfront conditional use for Harbor Place Mini Golf. Mr. Brzezinski? Ms. Flores?
No.
Mr. Keys?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Troop is no longer here? Witherspoon? And Ms. Allen?
Yes.
So the motion approves. Ayes, yes. Nays, one. I think we're back to citizen public comment? Did we conclude that part?
Any other public comment? Frank, is this where we had anybody waiting on line for public comment? Okay. Moving right along, Lori.
Okay, so now we're going to ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16269, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PIMA, for thermal imaging equipment. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, bill number 16269, and now known as official file ordinance, 10/2022, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Council file, council pass official file ordinance, number 10/2022, by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16270, an ordinance closing and vacating the portion of West 20th Street between Burst Avenue and Hayburger Avenue. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance, bill number 16270, and now known as official file ordinance, 11/2022, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council pass official file ordinance, 11/2022, by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16271, an ordinance closing and vacating the portion of West Lakeview Boulevard and unimproved portion from Elliott Road to Sassafras Street. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance, bill number 16271, and now known as official file ordinance, 12/2022, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council pass official file ordinance, 12/2022, by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16272, an ordinance closing and vacating a portion of Myrtle Street from north of West Sixteeth, West 16th Street to the railroad corridor. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, bill number 16272, and now known as official file ordinance, 13/2022, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council pass official file ordinance, number 13/2022, by yea six, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16273, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $110 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from donations made in the memory of Robert Lutton. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, number 16273, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance, number 16273, by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16274, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $102,854 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. Civilian intel analyst, PCCD, JAG year number two. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, number 16274, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance, number 16274, by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16275, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $459,576 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, the 2022 City of Erie Cossip, which I can't remember what that means. It's an opiate. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, number 16275, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance, number 16275, by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16276, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $54,759 from unappropriated anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2022 Project Safe Neighborhood. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, number 16276, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance, number 16276, by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16277, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $12,801,250 from unappropriated anticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof from the general fund surplus and will be used to fund the City of Erie Department of Economic and Community Development Loan Fund, $6,801,250, and the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie Loan Fund, $6 million. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance, number 16277, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys. Ms. Flores has a no. Mr. Nelson?
Mr. Keys has a no also.
Mr. Nelson? Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen? Council file, read and adopt council file ordinance, number 16277, by yea four, nay two on first reading. Okay, this takes us to new business. I'd like to note, there's an error in an amount on the agenda for new business. The Roosevelt Child Development Center under number five is not $75,000 for approval, it is $45,000.
Is there a move to adopt the balance of the agenda?
No move.
Second.
Separations? I'd like to separate number two, just because I think the family members were here and then they left because we had that long public hearing. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge Earl Dawson Way. Any other separations? They're still here? Sorry. I saw Mo talking to somebody, I wasn't sure, so, thank you for your patience.
Are we still separating?
We're still separating, so we have number two separated.
Number seven.
Under new business?
And number nine. And that would also vote, the first line under terms were also.
The sewer infrastructure? So I have number two, number seven, number nine, and number 12 for separation? Any other?
Yeah, number three.
Adding number three, anymore? Moving the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, and Ms. Allen. Motion passes, yea six, nay zero. I have a resolution sponsored by Mr. Troop, seconded by Ms. Allen, that the proper city officials are authorized and directed to designate a portion of Elm Street from Buffalo Road to Fairmont Parkway as Earl Dawson Way in honor of his service and dedication to the City of Erie and his loyal customers as a longtime owner of Dawson's Barber and Beauty Shop. Discussion?
I just wanted to thank the family. I'm sorry, I didn't know, hadn't introduced myself to you before you came here, but I didn't know Mr. Dawson, but his obituary made me wish that I had known him, from all the things that he did in the community to the wonderful conversations that were carried on at that barber shop. Thank you for sharing his life with us, so, I just want to make sure that we acknowledged him in a way that you know we're thinking of you. Any other discussion?
Also like to thank Mr. Dawson for sharing his sons with us, and he's high. There they are. Good to see you guys. Ten girls.
Oh, I'd just like to say that Mr. Dawson actually cut my hair, you know, when I, when I was a youth. Back when I had hair. And, and so he was a, he was a fixture in the community and ran his business there for a very long time there on Buffalo Road and Elm Street. And so, congratulations.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Motion passes, yea six, nay zero. We have a resolution sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys. Resolved by the city council of the City of Erie that American Rescue Act revenue replacement fines in the amount of $12,125,376 be allocated to reimburse public safety salaries in the general fund. Discussion?
Anyone first? Or straight to me? Okay. This, this resolution, it's embodied in three other places in the agenda here, and so it's important to know that the revenue replacement, we are not replacing revenue in the general fund, that this is a pass-through for two organizations to put money into the fund in order to lengthen the usage of the funds, which I think is good in a general sense, but it hurts the city per se if we have other items that we wanted to use revenue replacement for, and we giving away all of our revenue replacements to organizations that are not the City of Erie. It is our job to put the City of Erie first, that we take care of the citizens and the people in our city first, and then if there are things left over for organizations who would benefit from them, I am completely amenable to helping those organizations, but this is a disservice to our community, a disservice to our taxpayers, and it may inevitably lead to a tax increase, fee increases on the city residents, and so we have to take care of ourselves first. And I do recognize that they are doing good work and these are good programs, but we have to take care of ourselves first.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. I, I will share a small piece of that echoed as to Mike's concerns, but understanding that the revenue replacement is likely to increase again next year, as long as our, just see if I could, so as of right now, our revenue replacement is a total pot that we found out after the final rule, that our revenue replacement for 2020 was approved to be a little bit over $6 million and a little bit over $9.5 million in 2021. As long as our city doesn't increase in population at a rate of 5.2 and our revenue increasing at a rate of 5.2, we are likely to get revenue replacement in future years. As it grew from 2020 to 2021, in a context where- As it grew from 2020 to 2021, in a context where COVID became less of an issue in that time, it's just that our city declined by a little bit, we are likely to be able to continue getting revenue replacement and have the flexibility that this offers in future years, which just gives this particular transfer a great opportunity for the city to be more dynamic in the way that it uses resources to invest in our city for growth. And getting that money out early in a revolving loan fund outside of the, you know, outside of the restrictions is a thrilling move for them to make. I'm thrilled that they used University of North Carolina and pulled all the data that is coming out of other places for that, and as long as in the future years that our revenue replacement is caught up with and that we address some revenue replacement issues, I'm really excited that the city came up with such a dynamic plan to address this.
I like the rebuttal. An old adage I try to live by is a bird in hand is better than the bird in the, is better than what's in the bushes, and we have, we know what we can replace now, we know what money we have now, we don't know what the future holds, and we don't even know if there's going to be other things that change that, how we can apply this. And so I think it's short-sighted on our part and on the part of the administration to even put this forward in knowing the possible ramifications for it.
You're ready to vote? I just wanted to add one thing, is that the Associated Press did an investigative piece about two weeks ago about how states and cities are spending their ARP funding, and there were a lot of, I'm going to say shocking allocations of funding, you know, to build a stadium and to subsidize a hotel. I think the City of Erie is going to, you know, you're talking about the near future and the long-term future, I think we're going to have the opposite story to tell here, that we've actually gone through a process that is rigorous but tight-paced because of the amount of time that we have to get money out the door, so I just, I think there's, Erie's going to have a story to tell that's a good story, and it's not, we are not going to be subject to an investigation by a journalism organization about what looks like could be wasteful spending, so I'm happy to share that story with you.
Can I give one more example?
Sure.
All right. So revenue replacement for the public's sake is not restricted nearly the same way. So we had an example that happened just a couple months ago where we replaced an incinerator, and we could have taken that from infrastructure money, paid for the incinerator, and then we wouldn't have gotten fair share funding back on it, was part of the issue. So instead, the city used revenue replacement for $675,000, or $650,000 expense, and now we'll get revenue replace, or fair share back from the other municipalities that depend on our sewer plant in the form of, you know, $375,000 return on that. Revenue replacement just gives us a way more dynamic way to address some of these concerns than some of the pots as they were originally designed, so that our city could get a better return on investment. Now, it does leave us without the ability to actually replace revenue if we overload what our maximum is, but in this case, we're likely to keep seeing that number every year, year over year, be 9, 10 million, unless, now the short side in this is, unless we do significantly grow as a city very quickly, that's the flip on it, that's where we could run into a problem. I'm not betting on that, it's been a long time.
And money to replace.
All right, you said you're ready to vote. Wait a minute, we're missing somebody.
I have a question. You said the first transfer, and then when I look at this...
Yeah, so it all embodies the same.
So the sewer infrastructure is the one, or the first line of the second transfer?
The first line of the second, the 12.4...
I just didn't want to separate the wrong one.
The 12.8 million, okay.
So you want this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Just provide some clarification while we wait for Ms. Flores to come back.
Thank you.
So, you know, just to clarify, what we're doing here with the revenue replacement is we have a lot of revolving loan funds that we've set up through the Department of Economic and Community Development, which is a city department, and also the redevelopment of the City of Erie, Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie. And so what we're doing is we're providing a lot of grants and a lot of loans to small businesses and entrepreneurs within the city, to community organizations with the city, within the city, to help with the economic recovery from COVID. We're also providing loans to residents for housing initiatives, various housing initiatives. And so, you know, from the outset, we saw an opportunity to create these revolving loan funds, and that if we could hold on to that funding and continue to revolve it out beyond 2026, that was our goal. And so, as Mr. Nelson alluded to, we checked with the University of North Carolina School of Government, Senator Casey's office in Washington DC, and our auditor, who said that the best way not to have to send funds back to the federal government and be able to keep them so that we can put them to use for the residents and the business owners and entrepreneurs in our city beyond 2026 is to move it through the revenue replacement. And so that's what we're, that's what our goal is, that's what we're trying to do, we want to be able to benefit the, our city residents for years to come.
Now that we have our water, I think we're all...
And Jasmine is back?
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski?
No.
Ms. Flores? Mr. Keys?
No.
Mr. Nelson? Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen? Motion fails to pass, nays three, yays two.
Wait, that doesn't matter.
It was 3-3.
Oh, Nelson, I didn't get you, sorry.
Sorry, yeah.
Here, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
So what happens now?
A little bit of pressure placed on Mr. Troop.
We can bring this back?
Can. Because that's the letter of the council. Motion fails at a tie, so Mr. Troop, you can come today for your local public...
Okay, I guess what I'm asking is what happens to, in addition to the vote, what does this mean? Somebody has to be able to explain to the public what we did or didn't do.
Well, we had some revolving loan fund projects that we were going to bring on the next agenda that we won't be able to bring, so there are development projects that aren't going to happen until this gets passed.
Okay, and Renee, can you just say what some of those revolving loan projects are so that the people, or the groups that would have benefited will know that they're now hung up?
There are a couple of affordable housing projects that we were going to fund, so...
Okay.
Okay, another point of clarification. So, does this come back? Does this...
It comes back if council wants it to come back, somebody would have to, I mean, it starts from scratch, so there would have to be a resolution presented, somebody would have to make a motion and a second to put it back on the agenda.
And that has to come from council, correct? Ed?
It would, yes.
Okay.
So the motion fails with a tie vote.
I would like the council members who voted no to come back with a proposal, to come up with $12 million for the revolving loans that are going to be hung up here, and for whatever. I would ask that in addition to, you know, I intend to bring this back, but I would ask the three who voted no to come back with an alternative to find $12 million.
President? I would suggest that Councilman Troop is the swing vote. If we bring it back, let him vote before others may bring suggestive changes. If they bring back changes, then he's not voting on the same thing we voted on.
Good point, thank you. I agree.
So this would be on the agenda in the next meeting?
That would be my intention.
Okay, I have number seven, a resolution sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys, resolved by the City Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to provide funding to the City of Erie Department of Economic and Community Development totaling $6 million to carry out the following loan programs. $2 million to Economic Recovery Growth, $1 million to Urban Core Anchor Building, $1 million to Small Business Diversity Loans, and $2 million to some construction and development? Help me out? Residential. Discussion?
No discussion, it was embodied in the failed resolution that was already voted on, so it's just, these are the two $6 million funds that were going to be transferred into the general fund, and the other one is on the, in number nine.
I'm going to motion to table those two then, because it looks like there aren't the votes to pass it?
Second. Second?
Okay, and then we will take these up when we have a full complement of council members in two weeks. So can we table two things at once, or do we have to table them separately, Ed?
Table both.
And we don't discuss them?
So we're tabling number seven and number nine on the agenda, correct? Okay, so this takes us to a resolution...
You have to vote on the table.
Oh, voting on the, motion to table, Ms., Mr. Brzezinski? Ms. Flores?
Table?
To table.
So the next, so more truth here, right?
Mr. Keys? Mr. Nelson? Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Ms. Allen? Okay, so the motion to table passes, yea four, nay two. Did I get that right? And that was Ed and Jasmine.
I think they both do the same.
Do we have anything else that's separated, Lori?
I have the transfer that Mr. Keys separated. It's the second one on the second page of the agenda, the Department of Finance American Rescue Act funds.
And this is all tied into what we already did or didn't do, correct?
Yes.
So we can't transfer anything since nothing got approved, correct?
Correct.
So what does that make this, Ed? Do we have to table this also? Or does it just become moot?
Well, I think it becomes moot, but I think just for clarity, it might be helpful just to have it, that it's being tabled, so that it's not being approved or shot down.
Okay, I moved to table.
Is this the whole?
No, we did...
Second your motion, is that...
Okay, we have a motion to table by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Nelson, to table the transfer of $12,801,250. Voting to table, Mr. Brzezinski?
No.
Ms. Flores? Mr. Keys? Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Troop, or he's not here. Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Ms. Allen?
That's three.
Okay, let's go back now.
So now we're going to go back and...
So we have...
Vote it down.
We have a no vote to table?
Oh my God.
I thought...
I'm sorry, but...
No, I think Jasmine voted yes.
Didn't you, to table?
She voted yes. We had Ed, Mike, and Mel voting no to table it. It's three to three to, again, yeah. So the motion to table fails. So what do we move into, discussion now?
No, there's no discussion with the table.
But we are...
It did pass.
Table is tied.
We voted it down, now it's still in the table.
Failed.
Motion fails to table with a tie vote.
So now we're going to go back and tie, tie again on not transferring the money, correct?
We could discuss it more.
Would you like to discuss it more?
Can we take the vote again?
I don't want to get involved in that Donny phone show.
Okay, we're motioning to table the...
Transfer.
The transfer of $12,800. I have Mr. Brzezinski.
I said no, right?
No.
And Mr. Witherspoon said no.
So the motion fails to table by yea, by three to three. So voting on the resolution.
To transfer.
Okay, I need another sheet. So the motion failed to table because it was tied at three to three. So now we're going to vote on the resolution to transfer the $12,801,250. Mr. Brzezinski?
No.
Ms. Flores?
No.
Mr. Keys?
No.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen? So the resolution fails to pass, yea four, not, yea two.
Again, somebody would have that on a sex page and have to cheat, but I'll...
All right, Lori, are we committee reports now?
Yeah, I'm going to redo all my sheets.
Can we start doing committee reports?
Yes, you can.
All right, let's just go, start with Chuck, and let's keep in mind the time and committee reports.
Is this the system? I don't know.
I had a system of changing everybody around, but Mo left, and so that's going to upset my alphabetical list, so.
All right, committee report, the committee I had to show up, be at before this one, it's always a two-week delay on it, was the, or I guess three-week on this one now, was the Water Authority. We had a really good input from community member, Fredda Tepper, that led to some good discussion, but it was so far down the line that it still got approved regarding the water, the Water Authority's lawns and how their maintenance is. And it was really a difference between, you know, when you look at lawn care professionals, some people are, you know, manicuring golf courses, and some people are taking care of environmental space. So the discussion came back to that. They still passed a two-year contract, they cost $60,000 for lawn maintenance on more of the golf side of maintenance rather than on the environmental side of maintenance, but they seemed to have enough interest to hopefully address it in two years. Otherwise, it was business as usual at the Water Authority. The only other thing for committee report is, no, that's enough, that's... That's-- we won't take any more time.
Thank you. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Madam President. Probably the most important thing we talked about all day, that the summer basketball league registration is open for the kids. Spoonsleague.org. The first day it opened, we had 215 signed up, and it'll be open for another month. So, it looks good. Of course, every summer, I worry about something developing, but this is our 32nd year, and we have had zero incidents, and we just pray that that continues. Once again, I do thank EPD for their presence because I'm sure that's a deterrent. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Keys?
I did attend the airport meetings since our last council meeting. Nothing to report out on the airport. Just a general note. First, we didn't talk about it, but we approved a lot of money for different organizations today. Some of them, you know, were here to thank us, and it's just, you know, my hope and my prayer that the money helps the community, helps the agencies, and that they all achieve their goals that they had set aside for the ARP funding. That completes really my report. It's a-- Liz mentioned that with ARP, we nearly doubled our budget, so it takes a lot of time just to run down the different things that we're spending money on, and it may take a little time from some other things. And so, be patient with your council people.
Jasmine?
I don't have a report from the EMTA just because we had a study session, and we did transportation around in and out of the City of Erie, so I didn't-- there's not really much to cover besides what was already available to the public. I did have a meeting with Amy Murdock, and we do have a Technology and Innovation Roundtable Discussion Plan for April 13th, and that is going to be between 10:00 and 11:30 a.m. So, there's a big list of people who have been invited, and we're hoping that we're going to get a large amount of people in that sector to put input, to get Erie advanced into the 21st century, hopefully. So, we'll see how that goes.
Thank you. Music to my ears. Anything else? You're good?
Nope.
Okay. Ed?
Yes, thank you. I don't normally use the no button often, but this is an elephant in the room, people. Kids are getting shot in our schools. And we're worried about new housing developments, whether there'll be more guns in new housing developments. There's no right way to do the wrong thing. The thing we have to do, and I'm proposing this with ARP funding, we have all kinds of police money. Let's get a task force. Let's get everybody together in this task force. The worst thing that could happen-- Mo is up in a meeting with the school district right now. They're going to try to figure out a way to protect the kids inside the school. They can't do that at that school. I spent 12, 15 years there. There's 50 doors, and I don't know how many windows. If I want-- if I'm a kid and I want to bring a gun to that school, I can do it. I can show you how to do it. 50 doors. We need to get a task force on the street. We need to get the guns out of the hands of young kids. God forbid. Every place you go, Sacramento, there's shootings. The guns are rampant. You can't tell me that we don't know where these guns are. We could probably pick out the cars that the trunks are filled with, where the kids can go there and make a deal and get one. That's my concern right now. Housing, I've been in real estate. I wasn't-- I'm retired now. I was in real estate for almost 40 years. I near and dear to that kind of thing. But, we have to clean up our city before we do anything else, and we have a five-year chance to do that with a task force. We don't have to do it with brand-new policemen. We can bring back the guys that have retired. They know the streets. They know how to get things done. We can hire them without benefits because they already have benefits as retired people. They're sharp. They know what they're doing. They can get into the streets, and they can make it safe for our kids. God forbid we lose any more. Or, Mr. Troop stands in that line of fire almost daily. I did that for 35 years in the school district. Not with guns. We didn't have that kind of stuff to worry about. Today, these guys do, and they face that challenge every doggone minute that they're in school. But, we got to start thinking forward. There's no right way to do the wrong thing. That's the bottom line. And I'm sorry that I'm pontificating, but it's very close to my heart here because I love the kids, and it's what our city's all about, our kids. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. I'm just going to take my opportunity to just read the headline from the AP story. Pandemic Relief Money Spent on Hotel Ballpark Ski Slopes. So, I want to take the opportunity to thank the administration and Chris Groner for all the hard work that you've done. I hope that we will be able to get these monies approved at the next meeting. Certainly, everybody recognizes that the violence, the gun violence, is a huge issue. We have already put money aside, $15 million, I think, for additional police resources from ARP funding. The call-in program is now going to be working with younger people, not just with adults. Those are proven strategies, going back to the Don't Shoot program that was, you know, checked out by John Jay years ago, which the county has adopted. So, anyhow, thank you, Renee, and thank you, the team. But, if city council needs another session on this particular funding, the way we did for the number five with all the economic development, whatever, community development initiatives, we'll do that to make sure that everybody has good information for voting. And no ideas are bad. I thank Ed for bringing his experience from the school district into the public forum, but we all want to do the right thing, so. We don't have-- do we have Teresa anywhere online or anything? And then, we go to-- next, we go to Ed, and then Renee? Is that how we do this?
Yeah. I think Renee should go last. I have nothing. I have nothing. Thank you for your patience for the public hearing.
Thank you for all your help.
We'll redo that public hearing in two weeks. It'll be a similar setup, slightly different issues, but similar setup.
Yes. Renee?
Hi, everyone. Just quickly, I know this has been a long meeting. One, as Councilwoman Allen mentioned, I mean, we do have $14 million allocated for adding police, and, you know, part of that is to reinstate the juvenile unit, which we've been seeing as a need for quite some time. The officers who would be assigned to that unit would work directly with probation and parole, would build relationships with our youth, would get youth into diversionary programs, and try to prevent minor crimes from escalating into major crimes. Also, we are extending the call-in to younger aged children now and are moving forward on that. Unified Erie is, as you said, a proven success, and we look forward to expanding that as well. Quick update on Stormwater. We're meeting with Wood Consulting later today to review the applicants to the Credit Advisory Committee and get Wood's input on those best to fill out that group, and hope to have the first meeting with that committee at the end of April. And I'll provide updates as I have them. In terms of the community development initiatives that were approved by council today, recommended by the project review team, first, I want to thank the project review team of nine volunteer members for all of their assistance and the work, the many hours that they put into reviewing all the applications and all the supplementary materials that were submitted. It was a lot of work, I will tell you. And they did it, and they powered through. You know, I just want to point out that those projects that were approved today, there were nearly $1.6 million in youth initiatives that were funded, and I think that's a great thing for the city. I think there were a lot of organizations that stepped up, that wanted to provide summer program, year-round programming, places for our youth to go and be engaged in good fun activities, and so, I think that's a great success today that I wanted to make sure I pointed out. We will be happy to have a debriefing session to go over the purpose of the revenue replacement. Just to clarify, all of the things that we're looking at putting that funding into, those are all things that have already been approved by city council for the use of ARP funding. Those are the same things that you all voted to allow us to do in November and December, and so, this is just a different way of doing it, to move it through the revenue replacement so that we don't have to send any of that funding back to the federal government and continue to revolve that and grow that and benefit our community well beyond 2026. So, we're not changing anything about how you've already approved that money to be spent. We just want to make sure that we can do that well, well into the future. That's all I have for today. Thanks.
Anything else for the good of the order? The bad of the order? Okay. Adjourned.